This study session is being called to order. And our first agenda item is the public forum. I'm going to read the preamble and the rules to the public forum, so bear with me here. The open forum is a safe space for our community members to share their experiences, concerns, and feedback. In this space, we protect First Amendment rights while showing respect for everyone. We ask the community to be respectful, not only in speaking at open forum, but also in listening. As a community, we have an opportunity to elevate the conversation and create healthy spaces for dialogue and opposing views. Demonstrating this for and in our community shows how we can all collectively do better. Thank you for respectfully sharing, listening, and being engaged in the Prior Lake Savage educational community. The rules for open forum are as follows. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign-up sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address the board. Only those whose names appear on the sign-up sheet at the time of the meeting is called to order shall be permitted to address the board. Up to five speakers shall be provided a maximum of three minutes, which is 15 minutes total, to address the board unless an exception is granted by the board chair. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told his or her privilege of speaking has ended. If you have any handouts or materials for the board, please submit those items to the executive assistant, Martha Waltz. Members of the public should not approach the dais or approach board members within the table during the open forum regarding an issue presented. If follow-up by administration is necessary, the chair shall request that superintendent follow-up on the matter. When the board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order. However, the board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the board in its deliberations. Tonight, we have one forum and one speaker on the levy amount, and that is Mr. Bill Markert.
Can you do everyone? I haven't had a chance to fully digest the preliminary levy certification yet, but a couple of things jumped out at me that I'm hoping you can address tonight and for the public. During the preliminary budget discussions earlier this year, administration told the board that our general fund levy, general fund levy, just that portion, for next year was going to be $18.2 million. Tonight, you are presenting a general fund local preliminary levy of $20 million, and this is 1.8 million, or about 9.9% higher than what administration included in the preliminary budget. I'm having trouble understanding how the preliminary levy can be so much different than what the board was provided back on June 10th when the preliminary budget was approved. It appears there are three large variances that make up the majority of the 1.8 million dollars increase that administration is now asking the board to approve tonight. One, the preliminary budget levy figure included a prior-year negative adjustment amount of $1.4 million. That's no longer in any of the figures, and I'm wondering what happened to it? By pulling it out, you increase the taxes residents are going to pay by $1.4 million next year. Two, there's an 800,000, excuse me, OPEC levy line item now that wasn't shared during the time the preliminary budget was approved, and I'm wondering why wasn't that shared at that time? This category item had not been assessed to taxpayers in prior years, at least the three years that you're showing us tonight, but it is this upcoming year. So we're assessing it now that we haven't before, and there must be a reason. I'm hoping you can share that tonight. And three, the other large variance from what the board was told when they were approving the preliminary budget is the local optional levy category. That's about a half a million dollars higher. The past few months, administration has brought forward to the board roughly $400,000 of new operating and capital expenditures. And administration has stated that these expenditures will be covered in this year's budget. I'm wondering, is this how you're covering these unbudgeted items? Because they weren't part of the discussion during the preliminary budget process, but they're being called or covered in the budget, and I'm just wondering, this local levy increase that's so much higher than it used to be that we thought it was going to be, because that's what's covered it? That's another question. With a year of historical increases in state aid being received by our district, I was kind of shocked to see the local levy increasing this year by roughly 4%. I will hold off my questions related to last year's results since what you provided tonight is preliminary financials, but I'll have some questions as to why 2022-23 general fund expenditures came in at $116 million versus what we were told was going to be $112 million when we were approving the 2023-24 preliminary budget. I also have questions to the district, how we can have a $116 million general fund expenditure budget for this upcoming year when we had roughly $4 million of what was called new investments? We had $116 million of expense last year, plus $4 million this year. It's $120, not $116, so that's another question I'll have, and I'll save that until next week. Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes the public forum. Next, we go to purpose and agenda. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Vice Chair France. This evening, as we do with all of our work sessions, it's our opportunity with administration and the board to have a deeper discussion on key topics. Tonight, we'll be going over our stakeholder survey data, and we'll be dialing in our Studer consultant, Dr. Casey, here in a few moments. We'll be discussing our preliminary audit review. Again, this is our preliminary audit review. The final conversation and vote will come in October. We will give you our 2023-24 enrollment update and our preliminary levy presentation that we need to certify before the end of the month. And again, that will come up later on for an official vote. This is preliminary. And then, our annual class size and staffing report, based upon where we're at with our projections and where we're looking at in terms of our class sizes, and where some of the hotspots that we've been managing from the start of the school year, et cetera. And then, we got a series of proclamations that we'll be closing out this evening with as well. So that's our agenda for this evening, Vice Chair France.
Great, thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is the stakeholders' survey data, and we're waiting on it. Okay. So...
Six more minutes.
Six more minutes. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, as we're, if I may, as we're getting that teed up, you know, we switched over to Studer Education Group last year with a new stakeholder survey that we've done compared to what we've done in the past. I think it was through Survey Monkey or something that was in-house. So we now have an opportunity to gather data that allows us to benchmark against not just ourselves, but more on national norms of those who participate in this, just to get a better sense of how we are performing based upon our stakeholders. And as we strongly desire in this district, we want to ensure that we are bringing the perspectives of those that we serve and bringing their thoughts, ideas, concerns, celebrations all forward. This is very good data for us to have at our disposal, and it's something that we don't take lightly. And you've heard me talk several times around the data process and how we need to make sure that we are leading with data. And this allows us to take these data sets and be more developmental versus judgmental. That's another thing you've heard me say a lot. So we can look at the data and bring it to our schools, which you'll hear a little bit about this evening, and how we are taking actions at our school improvement level, but also at the district level, so how we consider what our stakeholder groups, and in this case, our teachers, our parents, and our students, and looking at this year as our baseline, well, actually, it was last year, about this time that they took the survey, that would be our baseline data set because we've not used this format before. So I think for us, as an administrative team, you know, we looked at this data, and the initial was like, wow, we are clearly at the ground level, and we have a lot of opportunity before us, and we have some, I think, some interesting distinctions and some wonderings to unpack as well. So we're excited about how we can use this. I shared some of this at our back-to-school kickoff, specifically our teacher, our educator experience, and it allows us to really be able to set together some strategies and plans to help our staff, our students, and our parents have a much better experience, you know, in Prior Lake Savage area schools. So, you know, with that, Dr. Casey is just coming online here. Good evening. We're waiting for one of our screens to kind of illuminate up a little bit here, but she will walk us through the presentation. We have some archived data that will serve as an appendix as well, and after the presentation, we'll be open up for questions that you all might have for us. So with that, Dr. Casey, we are teed up on our end in terms of whole-picture functionality.
Can you hear me well, Dr. Thomas?
Oh, yeah. One second, we're going to adjust our volume.
Wisconsin can hear you.
How about now, Casey?
Ask anyone, too?
Is that good for everybody here?
A little more. Try it again, Casey.
I'm kind of nervous, I don't want to hurt you.
I think we're good.
Well, good evening. It's so lovely to be with you, albeit virtually. I wish I could be there in person, but really delighted to be able to work through the Prior Lake Savage area experience survey data that is really data for improvement. And so just in terms of logistics, Dr. Thomas, am I sharing my screen on the presentation? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And we are good to go.
You're good to go. You can see it full screen?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Well, I'll always begin our work with this very important slide that I believe really sums up the work that we do together in our partnership with Studer Education and Prior Lake Savage area schools, is really our focus on leadership, specifically as it relates to the parallel paths of culture and strategy in organizations like yours that are committed to being an organization of excellence, one that's not satisfied with being a good or a great place to be, but constantly striving for that absolutely excellent organization for all that you serve. And that takes really intentional work in both culture and strategy. And tonight, the summary that you'll receive, again, about the experience survey results is a wonderful example of walking both of those paths in a parallel format. And so tonight, we'll provide for you just a re-dip back into those experience surveys that you've seen before. We will provide some high-level information regarding the national benchmarks that were recently released, as well as an update from your team around the action plans and progress monitoring that's happening in your district as we speak tonight, and then finally enter time together rebrowning in that language of leadership and how will we, and you as leaders in the district, have those key words to be able to manage up the deep improvement work that your team is doing in response to this data that's really data for improvement that you sought out to get better every day for those that you serve. So as a reminder for you as an organization, you previously administered surveys internal to your district, and last school year was the first year that you administered the surveys through Studer Education. And that reminder of the why for the switch was twofold. Number one, you were looking for a nationally-normed survey where you could understand not only your internal strengths and opportunities, but also get a level of understanding how you might compare to peers nationally that also provide this survey. And secondly, it was a pretty hefty internal lift for your organization. And so really, that lift now in Prior Lake Savage area schools is the deep work that the team has been engaging in around how do we get curious, learn from those who responded to the survey data, and really focus our efforts on continuing to improve that experience for those that you serve. And so just again, a reminder of the data that we're looking at tonight was from a survey. The window was last February, and you can see there is a summary of the responses from your organization. The team also pulled out some of those themes from the survey items as a reminder of those areas that were strengths and opportunities or challenges. The student survey, as you might recall, has 20 different items that students respond to on a range of a 1 to a 5, a 5 being a strongly agree, and that Likert scale moving down to a 1 of a strongly disagree. And you can see there are some pretty amazing things to celebrate in terms of that five-point scale look at this data. First and foremost, your students believe that their learning is important at their schools, which is critical and huge to celebrate as a team. They have opportunities to be successful and believe that their principal is a good leader. Areas to dig in and understand how we could make some improvements for them from the district level, you see those listed as challenges, so opportunities for students to set goals and track their own progress, for students to be nice to one another and show respect, which interestingly is one of your national norm benchmark highlights. So we've got some wonderings about this information. And then finally, what it feels like for students to go to school each day in your system. From the employee perspective, employees also answered surveys of 20 different questions that same 1 to 5 scale, and you can see the themes of strengths and opportunities here as well. Your team members believing that they positively, their work positively impacts those that they serve, clear understanding of expectations, and being in an organization where employees regularly share ideas across one another. And some opportunities, again, to continue to work and improve, looking for additional ways for team members to have input on decisions or understand where their input affects those decisions that are being made, looking at resources to help team members feel that their efforts are maximized. And then that last bullet point really speaks to communication across an organization, which I know has already been a focus for you as you moved into this school year. And then, from the parent and caregiver standpoint, there are 15 questions on this survey for parents and caregivers that same 1 to 5 scale, seeing some celebrations of your facilities being cleaned and well-maintained for students, that they themselves, as parents and caregivers, are treated respectfully, that their child has the necessary materials to learn in their classrooms and learning environments. Some areas for us to continue to dig in and understand more deeply, some area around the, how consistently school rules are enforced across the school or the district, receiving regular feedback from the school regarding how their child is learning, and then those positive phone calls, notes, or emails being an area for us to continue to work on to provide great service for those within your organization and your community. And so one of the pieces that your district really sought when coming onboard with Studer Education was that opportunity to look at this data for improvement as a way to explore these results against other organizations who are giving the same survey. And so the next pieces of information that I'll share with you this evening highlight some of the national benchmark percentile rank distributions. And so just a reminder that when we talk about a percentile rank, it's really an understanding of how well one organization compares to others who provide that same opportunity for serving. Now, the way that we create our percentile ranks is that we take all of the organizations, and last year was our re-benchmark norm year, so this information was hot off the presses very late summer to a few weeks into September, and we take all of that information from across the country and build that out. Our fantastic survey team runs what's called a Monte Carlo simulation that expands those numbers out to at least 100,000 organizational data points to create that percentile rank. And I'll share that our partners, as you might expect, range nationally. In fact, I'm in, my feet are in California this afternoon to serve a partner out here in the upcoming days. Of course, you are part of some of our Midwest partners, and we've got partners all around the country that range in demographics, size, and length of partnership with us at Studer Education. So I provide all of that for you, just for that background on who might fall into the national percentile that we'll take a high-level look at this evening. And so when we look at the mean score of all of the survey items, we can look at where that mean score falls in the percentile rank, so compared to similar organizations that gave our surveys. You'll notice a small change if you printed out the depth ahead of the meeting, and so I wanted to just call your attention to this. I have just a transposed error on the slide, so you'll see that referenced with the asterisk. When we look at your student overall survey mean, so collapsing all of those 20 questions down into an average, your student experience is in the 65th percentile. So of all the organizations that take our survey, your student experience, their experience is better than 65% of other organizations. Employees and parents and caregivers, curiously, their experience is not quite as positive at this particular moment in time, but here's the real piece about this being data for improvement and not accountability. This is a survey that your leaders cared so much about the experience of parents, students, caregivers, that they sought this out to understand how to continue to improve that experience. And knowing this allows your team to continue the deep work of getting really curious about what makes the experience positive and where are there opportunities to improve that experience for those that you serve. And so I wanted through this next slide with you as just one piece that our team, that we've been working together in our partnership to get curious and seek to understand the differences in the experience as reported by students and parents. And so I pulled out these items in particular because the survey items track through very similarly. So for example, one of the survey items for students says that I believe my learning is important at my school. The parent item reads themes that I believe learning is important at my child's school. And you'll see the difference in percentile rank there. Students are better than average in terms of others who give our survey and how they feel about their learning in your schools, and there's something to just dig into and understand about the parent experience in that same area. You'll notice a similar difference in terms of students feeling safe at their school and that being a real celebration for you as an organization for how your students feel. And then that second item in that row of parents responding to their experience of their child feeling safe at school. And then again, that same track through on the bottom, students feeling that their family is treated with respect, and how parents responded indicating their level of respect at the school. So in our opportunity to debrief this as a partnership, we have some key wonderings about the information that we're seeing from these national benchmarks. The first takeaway, and I think you'll see that from the overview, is that students report their experience to be much more positive than adults. I made one small change on that sub-bullet point on one. There were two items that are between the 45th and the 50th percentile, but the vast majority, 18 out of 20 of the student responses are in the top half of the national benchmarks, and that's extraordinary to have that much of a positive student experience. And so the question that I'm working to support your team in really continuing to explore is what do we need to learn about what's happening in Prior Lake Savage area schools for the student experience? Because there's a secret sauce that's being played out there that we're curious about, and what's working for students, and how do we sustain that? The second key wondering, as we've indicated, is that adults report their experiences to be less positive than students. And so when working with the team, we've developed a couple of questions that I don't have answers to yet because our survey team is still working to disaggregate the national benchmarks. But there's some additional work we want to do regarding how does Prior Lake Savage area schools compare to other districts regionally? We have a small number in Minnesota who will likely expand that out to be a Midwest demographic group that we can use as a sub-comparison. And also, similarly-positioned districts with similar demographics to Prior Lake Savage area schools. And then also understand a third area in terms of length of partnership with Studer Education and what that improvement looks like over time with our coaching and support to organizations. So those are things that we're exploring because this is all about continuous improvement. Again, this is not data that your organization was required to gather. It was something that you sought out because you desired a deep understanding about what is the experience of those in your schools. And so what you'll see next is a summary of the work that your district and school-based teams have been doing since last spring, really to dig in and understand these survey results, to roll those results out and to gather input on the most important actions to take, to put plans in place so that those experiences continue to stay positive where there's celebrations and drive towards improvement, where there's opportunities. And so you should feel very confident as a board that your team, all schools have developed through their school continuous improvement plans, experience survey goals related to improving the experience of those that they serve. They've worked since last spring to develop and are now executing action plans with the goal of improving the 1 to 2 lowest items on each of their experience surveys. Then we're also working this year to create what's called a progress monitoring check on the survey so that those 1 to 2 items that are really focused work that our teams are driving towards improvement around, we'll do a short survey mid-year to understand the impact of those action steps that are being implemented so that we're able to adjust as needed or scale out bright spots excessive, as your team certainly will discover some of those as we move through the year. Because again, this is all about getting Because again, this is all about getting better and leading from a place of improvement. And so as leaders in the organization, we frame those questions really as before that you see up on your screen. What are we trying to improve? How will we know? And those are our progress monitoring checks. The actions that we're testing are the great action plans that your teams have put in place. And then how will we respond to what's working to improve the experience is and when maybe we need to do some readjustment so that when we take the full battery of this survey next year, we get a great sense of what's really moved the needle in an impactful way for those that you serve. And I'll share finally, before we talk about language for leadership, that improving organizations do this work in a way that drives out fear. Your team is sharing some, transparently, some data with celebrations at areas to get really curious about because they're committed to what that experience looks like and have demonstrated over the past several months really dedicated efforts to make sure this survey isn't just a survey, but one that they got incredibly curious about and continue to respond to since they received those results. And so as you, as a leadership team, a board and executive members of your senior leadership team tonight come together to have some discussion about this information, I bring you back to that last work session when I was there with you in person. And we talked about that idea of avoiding we, they language and really managing up and understanding the deep work that your team has doing, has been doing with that improvement mindset. And so I'll share just some high-level pieces that I know connects to the theme that you're working on as a district. Really that important work as leaders to focus on the we and how all of us have a line of sight and contribute to the experience of students, employees, and parents and caregivers. How your focus on the power of one this school year really illustrates how the experience of all in your organization is part of all of the small micro-interactions and all of the large macro-interactions that happen in your organization and how those are also important to the work that you're committed to doing. And then lastly, I just would end by applauding your senior leadership team and you as a board, excuse me, for your transparency around this information because it increases the knowledge and really casts that broader net of your commitment for accountability and accountability for improvement, really for all stakeholders that you serve. So that was a lot of information, and I know you will likely have some questions. And so Dr. Thomas, I'll just need, turn it over to you if there's anything you want to share with the board or any of the other senior leaders before we open it up for questions.
Sure. Thank you, Casey. And as you saw tonight, this data has things that we can be proud about. And I think it has opportunities for us to really dig deeper to really understand what's going on. I think one of the things that really interests me is trying to understand the distinction between our students' experiences and the experiences of adults, just generally speaking. You know, and forgive me for using this language, but if our, if our primary customer, that being our student, you know, everything that we as adults in the system do is for the betterment of our students if they're having such a great experience, where's the disconnect for adults in the system? Whether it's our parents, whether it's the staff. That's something that's really important to me as a superintendent to try to understand, that adult lived experience. And the other piece that I think about, quite frankly, is, I think it was shared in one of the first slides as one of the challenged areas was around communication. This is something I know that we talked about as a board during a work session over the summer when we were looking at board self-eval and my eval. And communication came up as well as an area that I think we all can commit to, to working on. And what I'm finding in just the first several weeks of school, one strategy that we opened up this year was the Fridays Five. And it's, it's, for me, it just sounded like a great idea to put some quick hits out to our staff, our adults, our staff, adult stakeholder groups. And the feedback that we're getting on the Fridays Five is pretty significant. I'm surprised when I, I mean, I get emails from staff members or I talk to them when I'm on the schools. And everything from a staff member having questions and the ability to speak to the levy certification, which you wouldn't think would be on the radar of our staff, but it's on their radar. There was another time that, you know, one of our related services staff emailed me as well about a certain topic that came up and it became a discussion point for their dinner table at home with their student in the district. So it's these little things of communication and in this whole notion of our theme this year about the power of one that I think we might take for granted. That it's the littlest thing that oftentimes could be the biggest lever of change. And I think when you have that cumulative effect of the things that we all can do, it does create that high tide that can rise, raise, you know, all boats. But at the end of the day, our stakeholders need to know that their feedback matters and how we are going to be responsive to that feedback. Otherwise, it's just data and it does nothing for us. So our, you know, we had this conversation with all of our learning leaders as we closed out the school year in one-to-one checkouts with our principals. But then also as our last learning leaders grouped, our last, what do I want to call it? Retreat. Thank you. Our retreat at the end of the school year. It was all focused on publicly sharing with your learning leader colleagues, this is my stakeholder feedback. And it's a humbling experience to be able to say in front of your principal colleagues, here's where we are excelling, here's where I think we're challenged. And the reason for that exercise was, again, not to put learning leaders out on blast, but if I'm struggling with something in my school, perhaps Tammy's school is thriving that space and their feedback is, you know, accelerated. And so I now have an opportunity to say, hey, what are you doing that I might be able to try at my school because you're getting the outcomes that we desired and vice versa? So it really opened up a nice conversation of problem-solving in a very trusting, safe space. And I think it fueled their ability this year, and you'll see this vis-à-vis some of their state-of-the-school reports. This is also very public-facing at the local level. So they're coming before their community saying, this is what we heard you say and here's where we're going to commit to improving that. And it's an ability for them to say, and here's where we need your support to improving that. Because it's not just the schools, it's the partnership with our families, it's the partnership with our community. So no one's doing this in a vacuum. And so I really appreciate students' approach. We are very interested in kind of peeling back a few more layers of this onion as we look at those areas that Casey mentioned, particularly around your first-year implementation and how do like districts, so we don't have like any ends that might skew the data, but how do similar districts look compared to where we're starting, particularly in our first year with a new dataset as we calibrate those tools? So that's what I would add, and thank you, Casey, for your support with our team.
Yeah. Absolutely. Can I, I just want to highlight one other thing, Dr. Thomas, is as you were speaking, and you know, I would just share this piece because I do think it would be valuable for the board to hear. So we're moving into our second year of partnership. And what I saw your senior leader team and your full team of learning leaders in the district do was make a commitment coming out of year one. I was with them for part of their retreat in June and got the honor to join them again in August. They made a commitment to really develop a skill that's called leader rounding. And you may have heard about that from some of the leaders and the principals previously. But I applaud them for not adding additional tactics and chasing all sorts of different tools in their toolbox at this moment with the idea of deep listening. But their commitment to get better, use that tool with more members of the team and continue their consistent use of it. And to be in the room with them as leaders in August, working through and developing their plans and feeling the energy in that room was probably the best experience, you know, I'll say, in our partnership over the last year to feel that energy and commitment and support that those leaders had from the senior leadership team, I just think is noteworthy and just wanted to share that with you as a board because I know that wasn't a space that you were able to be with leaders in. So, sorry, Dr. Thomas. I just wanted to share that because it's important.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And yes, the leader rounding is a universal strategy that we're really trying to make almost second nature. And if you know folks in the medical industry and doctorship changes and they do those leadership rounds to kind of do the patient check-in, where are things at? That's the strategy that we're employing universally across the board. So, and then tying back to the survey data, you know, if we scored a, you know, 2.8, you know, my leader rounding with all my staff might be saying, okay, we landed at 2.8. What would, what does a 4.8 look like or what does a 4.0 look like? And what would it take for us to make that 4.0? I mean, it's very intentional conversations around that. And then I think the last point I'll reiterate, and I know that our board engaged in this even during your retreat, is the other strategy, I would say, that we are really being hyper-focused on is the managing up concept and how we're actually able to support one another when things are going well as well as when things are being challenged. And, you know, I think I talked about one of the aha moments, I think it was from the board retreat, when you were facilitating, Casey, and I shared with the board just my, maybe it wasn't shared with the board, maybe it was just shared with the senior team, but reflecting back on what is our obligation as a senior team to manage up to the board so that you are getting everything you need to be a strong governing board? And vice versa, and I know that was a conversation for you that night was about what you can bring in with each other and to the staff. But there is this reciprocal obligation, and I think it goes all the way throughout the district. You know, if we think about central administration compared to the schools, it's often times that you hear that big rift between the district, which is usually central admin, and our schools. And how we can do a better job by managing that relationship more effectively so we don't get that us versus them. And I think admin versus teachers at the school level or teachers versus paraprofessionals. I mean, you can see how this can cascade so quickly. And I think it's so much a part of our vernacular in K-12 as an industry. That is a strategy, the managing up in partnership with our leadership rounding, that I would say are our two biggest levers that we're focusing on as a system this year. So thank you for bringing that forward, Casey. And vice versa, friends, I'll turn it back to you for questions.
So I'm going to open up some questions, and we're going to start from this way around. Is that okay?
Yeah. Do you mind if I get up so she can see me?
Not at all.
Hi, Dr. Casey. Where am I?
You're right here.
And the camera's right over there.
Okay, there we go. Couple of questions. They're kind of tactical. In terms of response rates of this survey, where do we kind of fall in line? And with national and just maybe your, you having done this before, you know, what were the response rates like? And then it sounds like, from what Dr. Thomas had alluded to, that this was broken down kind of by school so they could take, you know, that, their personal feedback with these surveys and apply it to their buildings. Which I'm sure had happened because I went to the middle school, state of the schools last week, both of them, and they had this in their presentations, actually, and talked about the strengths and the challenges of the survey, so, which is great. So I probably answered my own question. But I just kind of wondered what the response rate was and what kind of maybe that looked like school by school, not highlighting one school over the other, but I just kind of wondered what your thoughts were on that.
Yeah. So great questions. I'll take the response rate one first. Because the survey is completely anonymous, we, through our key survey platform, we don't have the response rate. We give you the number of responses. So because we don't attach it to an email account or it doesn't get pushed out that way, your team would be best positioned to let you know of the X number of students that completed the survey. That was X percent of your student enrollment. I'll share a couple of highlights that are typical for us in the first year of a survey, so similar to the data that you would be looking at. It is not unlikely for partners that we work with, the first year that we give the survey, to have a response rate where there's some room for improvement. That may, I don't remember your percents off the top of my head, so that may not be the case. But in society, we're used to taking a lot of surveys where we never actually see anything happen with the results. And so what we see over time with our partners is larger and larger numbers of responses largely because folks know something's happening with the information, right? As you heard Dr. Thomas talk about, principals, district office staff are really digging in and wanting to know how do we improve this experience? We tend to see the response numbers go up over time, but the percent would have to be a follow-up from your district. And then the second part is, yes, there are ways that the data was disaggregated by schools and your team would have that in turn.
I think my, my biggest question was in the form of accountability for the, for the results, right? Like, I appreciate the survey in its totality, excuse me, and highlighting the things that we are excelling at as well as the things that we're looking for improvement in. My question is, how will that be measured as far as accountability? How do we, will it be, what benchmarks will we use, I guess? When we are, our, our goal is student experience, student academic achievement, a positive learning environment. I'm just curious, you know, what accountability looks like? How, and how that's measured? And maybe that's not a question that you can answer, Dr. Casey, but that's the question that pops in my head. Like, I love to receive this information, and Dr. Thomas has a great saying that he says, "Information is about..." I'm going to do a bad job of reiterating it, but like, information that we gather can only help us ask better questions. Maybe that's how you say it? And I think, you know, that's, that's what, my question is, when I look at all of this survey information, how do, how will we, how do we measure the accountability? What does that look like in our testing, in our...
Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and jump in on this one. So I think it can look a variety of different ways. First and foremost, at the individual site level, I think it's going to be important to look at the accountability based upon the action steps that they've put forth and strategies that they would like to accomplish as a result of that data. We can aggregate up those large themes that we get, that you've seen tonight, We can aggregate up those large themes that we get, that you've seen tonight, from a district standpoint, and there are multiple measures or multiple data points that we could use to address the accountability of improvement. So, again, if communication that you saw earlier is one of those areas that is a challenged area, then what efforts are we putting together as a district that when fam, or when teachers or whatever take this, again, or I should say, staff, again, take this, what level of different markers of improvement do we see? From, you know, 2.0 to 2.9 to a 3.2, whatever, I mean, that's one way that we can also look. I think the midpoint checks are going to be really important, not waiting for this survey to be administered again. One of the, you know, I think we talked about this as a team when we're processing some of this data, I mean, we've all seen thousands of surveys and data points over our careers. And I'll never forget, in my recent past, a survey consultant saying, "What was your intentionality for highlighting your efforts around a certain area of the survey?" So, and I'll just stay in the vein of communication. If communication was an area that was really challenging and folks didn't feel connected to the message of the district, therefore, they felt kind of in the dark and so they don't have a good feeling for working here. Okay, I'm just kind of running with that. What intentionality have you done to say to staff, based upon the feedback that we received from you, we were sitting at about a 2.2 in communication? And because of that, I am being more intentional to do XYZ strategy with you staff, whether I'm at a school or whether it's me as a superintendent, to make folks understand in the connection, oh, you did hear me, oh, you did hear us, and you're being responsive to that, so that we can help staff recall we are doing efforts. Because a lot happens that I think staff will just kind of take for granted and really not even register that, oh, that was about communication. I just thought that was the cost of doing business. Like, I don't even think about that. But we got to bring intentionality to our efforts so that our staff, our parents, and our students understand, your voice does matter in this district, and we want to be accountable for that, and here are some of the efforts that we're trying to do. So, I think those are some of the ways that I think it would show up, I mean, in terms of some of our improvements year after year and/or other measures, whether there are some of, so I will say, we'll be coming back to the board this year in conversations that we're having with Studer, is rebuilding our scorecard of accountability. Like, we don't necessarily have a systematized way of capturing, I think, accountability metrics in a way that we can say, here's our annual scorecard, and here are the key domains that we're going to be looking to drive improvement across. So, that is something that we're also going to be presenting to the board. I think I've said this in some other conversations with the board, this, a lot of this work, a lot of this feedback, I think speaks to the notion of our ability to develop a new multi-year plan for our community that has a companion scorecard index with a variety of metrics and a qualitative experience that you just heard tonight as well. So, we can kind of get this, you know, triangulated approach for how we are performing and how we are continuously improving as a district. So, more to come on that academic scorecard that we'll be introducing to the board.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Casey. I just want to clarify, so the scoring, the ranking, when it's a 3.66, it's on a scale of one to five, correct? Just to clarify.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, yeah. And then when you say the percentile comparisons, are the benchmark organizations, are they all education, like all school districts that you're using? So, it's an apples-to-apples comparison for the percentile?
Yeah, great question. And so, they would be school districts. Some may be a pre-K through 12, some districts that we serve are a K-8, an elementary district, a high school-only district, but those comparisons would be similar.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I know you worked with other companies as well, so, thank you.
Yep.
And then, you know, Dr. Thomas, I love what you said, feedback matters. And when I think about the 6,800 comments that we received as well, where, how are those comments, whether they're either positive or negative, how are they taken into consideration for our school continuous improvement plan?
Yeah, so, all of our principals received their local school data from all the stakeholder groups that you saw tonight, that was just specific, you know, and I'll just say Jeffers Pond, okay? And so, Patrick and his building leadership team take a look at that data, the comments, the rankings, et cetera, and begin to sift out, okay, so what does this mean for our local school community? That process with their building-level leadership team, perhaps it included some engagement with PTCs or other kind of events that they might have held from last spring to now. That process is what got schools to those action steps in their school improvement plans. So, that's the general gist of what happened at every school. Obviously, it looked a little different based upon each local school community, but that's how they got to, and these are the two areas that we really want to be public-facing about, because that was the dominant theme, good or not so good, that we want to put forward and celebrate and build capacity around what's working well, and then lean in with our parents and communities and say, okay, and here's where we are committed to doing something different, and here's where we could use your help in that.
So, is my understanding correct that then, obviously, the, you know, there were the questions answered, which feed into the percentage percentile, but the comments don't feed into, they don't feed into the ranking? Those are just taken into consideration as we build our plans?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Overall, two themes, perhaps, gathered from those comments.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you for asking it a little bit differently, because this was actually a point that I know Casey shared with us when we first did our own senior leader survey to learning leaders. It's natural human behavior to look at the negative stuff and say, okay, let me go right to there, and then start whacking my ass over the head like, why didn't we do this? Why didn't I do this? And the should've, could'ves, would'ves. And she cautioned us as a team to not run to that space. Look at your quantitative data points. All the qualitative stuff, the comments, that's where you go mining for understanding of context. And so, if you're extremely high, and you all have heard me say, we can't leave learning to chance. I don't care if a student is struggling or if they're doing well, we need to know the why that they're doing so well or why they're struggling. And same with us as staff. If we're doing really well in this area, well, what are people saying about that? And the same would go true of, okay, here's a low spot, you know, just keep using communication. Communication was low, okay. What are some of the points that people are saying? There might be some specifics that come out, you know, and I'll just, full disclosure for me, just because it's me in this data point, you know, there was about a handful of comments in totality of the 6,000 comments that specifically said the superintendent or said my name. Natural human behavior. I proxy for that, I looked them up, and I want to know. Okay, what are people's experiences with Mike Thomas or the superintendent? And there were a lot of positive things, and I can specifically think of two critical points of feedback, one of which was kind of a moot issue. It was about, why does the superintendent cancel all the holidays? And that was actually just the opposite of what I did as the superintendent, is bringing a lot of that back, but nonetheless, I looked at it to try to understand. And so, that helped me understand that data point, the quantitative data point, like, okay, this is where I really want to lean in now as a superintendent, or if I was a principal, or if I'm, you know, a teacher, hey, this is what our parents are saying. So, go to the comments to get a deeper understanding of context. Don't use those in isolation, because they can blow your head up and make you feel really good falsely, or they could really bring you down, you know? So, you need a balance of both. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, thank you. And I think in general, people want to know, I mean, if they're providing the feedback, they want to make, they want to know that it's read.
Absolutely.
And that change is created. And then the last but not least, I just want to say, I loved what you said about improving an organization drives out fear. And when I think about the fear, and I think about the parents and where we need to make improvement, I also, what comes to mind is that transparency creates trust. And so, I really feel strongly that we're headed in the right direction, because trust is what will drive out that fear. So, thank you. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Two quick comments and one question. First comment was along the lines that Jess, our director at Olstead, pointed out about response rates. I loved to hear that you see that grow in the future, or generally, once people realize that we are asking for their feedback and actually doing something with it, tied to the school improvement plans and the direct action plans associated with that. So, those two things go hand in hand with my thought process. I think it was okay results, but I would remind people, this is your chance to, you know, have your voice heard. So, I appreciate that. My question would be, could you describe for me what that mid-year check-in progress looks like, just simply? What would we see that midterm, that just internally here, or is that something that you strive for more?
Yep, so, it, great question, and thanks for clarifying that. So, really, the midpoint check would be designed as a pulse check survey. So, the whole battery of the survey has 15 or 20 questions. You've heard Dr. Thomas describe the work that the schools have been doing around one or two items of greatest opportunity. And so, that pulse check with my coach and your team would internally run that survey. It's not something we offer right now through our key survey platform, because it would be personalized to those one or two items that really deep and strategic intentional work has been happening around. And so, Dr. Thomas was just exactly describing it the way it would go. I would work to coach and support your leaders around that communication, reminding, for example, if we look at that communication theme, remember, parents, this was an area that you shared as an opportunity for us. You saw A, B, and C happen as a response to your feedback. We're going to give you a chance to answer that one survey question again on the same scale, so that we'll know before the full battery of the survey if we've made an improvement and can have time to adjust. That's the key to the progress monitoring, is if we're putting in deep work and effort around that, we want to be able to know in a short cycle of improvement, the impact of those actions.
So, Julie, I would just add to that, too. This is like our MCAs and FastBridge, you know? And think of these midpoints as our FastBridge. It's our formative assessment, our ability to understand how a student is performing, and in this case, how our community is receiving us. And we have time now to continue to modify our actions and say, okay, that communication strategy isn't working, it's not landing, let's go to Plan B, you know? So, great, great way to push on that mid-year. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I've done it.
Well, the first one, I want to go back to what Jess said about the percentage of students, percentage of parents, et cetera, because playing on that theme of, you know, when they start seeing results, when they start seeing all the talk about the responses and all that, I would hope that our level of engagement, particularly with parents, would also improve. And I don't know what that percentage overall is of the possible number of parents and caregivers that were provided the survey versus how many actually took it. Now, we don't need to know how many took it in the same family and all that, we want to keep it anonymous, but I would hope that the level of engagement goes up as the trust improves and as we continue to discuss this. So, I, I'm not sure if there's a goal with that, so that's my question, that's my first question anyways. Is there a goal with improving overall engagement? I thought the employees, by the way, was fairly high compared to our other surveys, so I was very impressed with that, but as far as parents goes, are we going to do anything different to make sure people know it's going out, encourage them to respond, anything?
I'll jump in real quick. I think Jessica's point earlier, Director Olstead's point about hearing about it at the middle school, in the state of the school, in the fall, bringing it back, the survey that they took back in February, bringing it back to the forefront here as we kick off this school year was very intentional, as well as the pulse checks, all aiming at then we're going to take the survey in the same timeframe this upcoming school year. We'll keep that engagement. The theory on this would be that it would keep that engagement high, and that, again, each of our skips, and I was reviewing some of those very, to Dr. Casey's point earlier, those are specific things that parents should and will experience, and we want to check to make sure that they are. So, I think that the engagement will increase, because we are going to go back out to our parents in that November, December timeframe is what we're talking about, so that we can make adjustments if they aren't experiencing what the goal was in the skip plan around those things, that we can double down, if you will, on our efforts to reengage or engage at a higher level with regard to that. So, I would expect that we would definitely see that engagement. Have we speak, it's a little bit with the parent, a little bit tricky in terms of the actual number of respondents and the percentage of respondents, but I do have some data that I, that Doctor Zumbush in the back had provided for me regarding student and staff input and engagement. If we look at students, it was 43% participation. If we look at staff, depending on how we, if we look at all staff, which includes 200 casual employees, it's lower, it's at 61%, but if we look at, take out the casual employees, it's at 73%. And that is a higher percentage of participation among staff.
Well, it's higher percentage than historically, too.
Yeah.
An elementary took it, too?
Yep.
Students, okay. Sorry, Mary.
No, it's fine. Which kind of, you know, when we're looking at these aggregated numbers, you know, I did notice also the difference between the questions posed to students and how they respond versus their questions to parents, and how it wasn't always extreme polar opposites, but they were opposite enough, and we've seen this in the past, too. But one thing that I always question is, when we aggregate from K through 12, a question like, I like going to school each day. We almost always see K through eight be a little bit more enthusiastic about school. It starts to wane in middle school, and of course, you know, so, I, you know, when I look at a number like that, I wonder when it shows almost directly in the middle of the five, how much of that number was actually influenced by high schoolers, you know, always claiming to hate school regardless of how much they actually miss it, and it's gone. So, I'm not sure if that's a, if that's a number that, when you have a challenge area, is there, did that 3.32 in the student data actually reflect equally amongst all grades?
And I think that's why we do give that data specifically to the site for them and their teams to analyze their responses from those who chose that particular level as the, I'm responding to this as a high school student, or as a Jeffers Pond student, or as a Kidno twiddle school student. So, we do give those specific, that breakdown to the staff.
I guess I'm questioning with that breakdown, the 3.32, did we see that same level with I like going to school each, or 3.31? Was it naturally higher usually in the lower grades than it is in the upper grades? And is this, I understand the challenge area, but is it more challenging for a certain grade level?
Yeah, I think that's some of the further, I think that's some of the further disaggregation that we can do. This is, and this is the only question I can afford.
The average for high school for that item was 2.93. So, it, yes, is the short answer to that. Yeah, so, the high school were much lower.
Okay. And I assume our challenge areas, then, and our school improvement plans are reflected by, like you said, the grade and the area, okay. Another thing that I wanted to question, because I assume that this probably positively affected next year, but I thought but I thought the timing of the survey was interesting and that we did it in, you know, the beginning of second quarter. And we hadn't yet gone through the data gathering, I think for the first time, that we actually went out to the individual learning team leaders as well as departments and asked them to be active participate, participants in the budgeting process, which I think probably engaged people a little bit more on those, on those questions. And I was wondering, as you're putting your, your finger on that pulse, when you see a lower score that we have a challenge with, if I have the opportunity to provide input on decisions that affect my job, that's a critical one. And yet they hadn't yet gone through that process for the first time. Is there, my question is, is that, do you feel that that process itself that happened right after the survey was taken is, would have a direct impact just from the nature of the budgeting cycle and the way we did it differently?
Yeah, I, I think, I think the noise that may have been picked up in that timing of when we issued this inventory may look different because we'd gone through a full cycle. There was a lot of newness, period. A lot of new members on the senior leadership team, new members on the board, new budgeting processes or staffing processes. There was a lot of new things, period. So I think going through the entire cycle and now folks able to see what that one year looked like, I think we'll have a truer, a true, a more true base of our employee experience because they now know what they might not have known. Or when they took this, they were thinking about a previous process or a previous administration or a previous whatever. But for now, the question's before me. I'm going to answer it with that context versus what actually happened. So we'll see what kind of distinctions, you know, come of this one.
Then the, the other thing, because we're going to go into this and this is my last question. You know, when, and this is just my initial impression, not having the value of all the detailed data underneath it. When I see the challenge areas on regular receiving feedback from school staff, receiving positive phone calls, I immediately go into class size and the workload on staff. And I'm wondering, was that any of the feedback that was received in the improvement or the, the challenge areas with regards to being able to actually service each individual student?
When, when I think about, Vice Chair Franz, when I think about two schools in particular that I had extensive conversation with about this very metric and the strategies that they put out, it was not in response to, "I don't have time." It was just having the intentionality about being proactive in your communication versus reactive. We always seem to call when Michael, you know, didn't make the right decision or we're always calling when Michael's grades are in the dump versus when he actually does something well on a, on a unit test or an assignment. So I think that was in these two schools, because I know they had a robust approach to this, that was their, that was what they were responding to, not about time.
That's great.
And if I may add to that, I think that one of the things that I saw as well in the conversations that I was a part of with a couple of schools was the, we all collectively, all staff can be a part and can contribute to this and finding ways in which all staff will be engaged in that positive, getting information home, engaging with students and ultimately with families around that. I think everybody feeling like they can have a part in that. When some of the, in the skip plans, there are certainly elements of our skip plans that sometimes people struggle to see their place in helping deliver on. But I think those, that was a very specific thing in multiple buildings that I was a part of the conversation was, we all can be a part of this.
Well, first of all, I think it's very brave to do these types of surveys. And I so appreciate the, the intensity of the data, how it's been delivered and the fact that we have an excellent baseline to, to continue where we're doing well and to improve upon areas that need improvement. And I, you know, you're never going to get to fives on everything. If you do, then you spend a lot of money. But I, I personally enjoy this, this data and I can't thank Studer enough for the, for the amount of data that we received in order to be able to make these types of decisions as well as to gauge our long-term improvement. So thank you.
It is my great pleasure and I've shared this with the leaders before. This is your, the baseline first data point on your experience survey journey map. And so all of the pieces that your team is learning, what works, the conversations, when and how we look at the data is going to be part of a really fantastic improvement story. And I'll, I'll leave you with that. It's just the recognition that I have as your coach for your commitment to purposeful work, to supporting your team, to transparency with your community. None of that happens by chance and I just thank you for the opportunity to partner on behalf of Studer Education with the privately savage area of school district. You are a joy to work with.
Thank you, Dr. Casey.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is the preliminary audit review. So I'm going to hand it over to Director Patterson.
Thank you, Vice Chair Franz. You have in your packet very preliminary financial statements. At our October 9th board meeting, Mr. Jim Iken from MMKR, our audit firm, will be here to give his audit presentation and give us the management letter. He's not provided us with that management letter, but when I talked to him a couple of weeks ago, I requested that we at least have something that you can look at so that when he comes on October 9th, you would at least see preliminary financial statements so you're not totally surprised at what he'll be presenting. There, you know, there have been some questions about where we're ending up. One of the things that I can tell you is, is we added a lease this year for Apple Computer. In the way that Gatsby rules and the new Gatsby rule, I think it's 97, we have to report all of those leases even though we don't pay for it all in the same year. So when you look at the statement of revenue expenses and changes in fund balance and the financial packet, normally what you would do to get to your change in fund balance is take your revenue minus your expenses. So when you do that, we have a revenue of $112 million, expenses $116. Then you have to back off that $1.3 million that is for a four-year lease. And then that's what the change in fund balance will be. We also spent more in special education than what we had originally budgeted. We just had some very unique needs this past year in our special education services that we had to provide for our students. We had some challenges, so we ended up spending a little bit more in special education. And then the other thing that we spent, that we hadn't intended when we did the original budget, was our LTFM dollars. We had planned to do some of that pool maintenance work. However, with the construction on Fish Point Road, we decided to move that up and we did some of that pool work. And then as we drained the pools, we found more things wrong than what we had anticipated. So we moved up some of the expenses for LTFM. And one of the unique things about the long-term facilities maintenance is because we have a 10-year plan, you are allowed to overspend in a year and the MDE will allow that as long as you adjust the years going forward. And that's what we're doing. So if you look at the budget that we planned for this current year and next year, we've reduced the amount of money that we'll be spending on the LTFM projects because we've just, we've already done the pool work. So there will be some adjustments there. As Jim presents his budget, he'll have the whole presentation. He'll present you with all of the charts. And this isn't final yet. We asked him if we could send this information into MDE and he said, "Not yet. It's not final yet. They're still making some changes." But like I said, we, we did want to give you something that you can think about when he does come on in October 9th.
With that, I'm going to open up for questions. Everybody have any questions on the preliminary budget numbers?
I had some questions I emailed in. Thank you for answering them. I think the only question I have is with the higher $116 million in expenses, does that then, how does that impact our budget for the following year?
So one of the things that you were giving, and to think on, one of the, I can't remember which board meeting it was on. We had talked about how we developed the budget for '23, '24 and how we weren't just going to make the assumption that we were going to spend the same thing. We actually filled in the dollar amounts. We looked at actual salaries for all of our staff. We looked at all of the anticipated expenses and utilities and transportation and curriculum. We came up with, here's what we know we're going to have to spend. And it came to about that $116 million of which we knew we were going to spend about $1.4 million in the revenue. So again, we asked the board to authorize us to use $1.4 million out of the fund balance, which we did. So the baseline that we started with for '23, '24 was not just $111. It was, here's what we actually got to spend. So that's where I think where the disconnect was.
And so come to the October 9th meeting, will you be able to take the actuals and put them into that budget template that shows like these are the actuals and this is projecting out what our budget will look like for the rest of the year?
The budget template that you had sent, that's something that we, we wait until after the budget has been approved or the audit has been approved and then we'll show and we'll get that on the website.
And then I know I've asked before about the two-year forecast. What point will we be able to see?
So I think I, I sent you the timeline that we had for budget. And on there, October 23rd is the time that we were going to present the five-year projection. We're working on it now, but we do want to take it to the Finance Advisory Committee just before we present it to this board. But it's on our calendar for October 23rd.
Questions? Yeah, me. I just had one question because the difference between corporate CapEx and amortization and all that, when you mentioned the lease, do we amortize anything in here or do we have to accept the numbers without a multi-year amortization with payment plans?
Yeah, we, we are required to amortize it out. There's, there's a new report that we have to fill out every year, a SABIDA, which is kind of showing all of the leases that you have. And because it's kind of a new requirement in the new Gatsby law, we've listed every single lease that we have just to report it. Not all of them will be amortized, but we just listed everything out there so that we know what our lease.
Schedule is the cash flow, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Okay, let's go on to enrollment update and you're up again.
Thank you. I did provide you with the enrollment history. It hasn't really changed that much. Our official child count will be October 1st. We're still a little bit down from what we projected, but again, we're still getting some students. What we find is there are families that are taking extended vacations and didn't come back that first week in September and they're slowly coming back. We did, I did look at the withdrawals and as of Thursday, we have six withdrawals. And comparing, comparing to the same time last year, there were 10. So we're not really seeing withdrawals. We don't really ask why they're withdrawing, although I can tell you that, that the reasons that we know our families were moving back to their homes district. So we lost a couple of kids that way. There was a couple that went to private schools and then one that went to homeschool. So why they made those decisions, we haven't really tracked yet. And we have talked about that. Moving forward, we'll be asking families questions on specific reasons why they were leaving so we can do that analysis a little bit deeper.
Tony, I apologize, my computer's been all night, so my apologies. The Lola Delago kindergarten, did we fill the three sections that we anticipated filling? Originally, we had talked about, I believe, 99 students, I thought it was, for kindergarten going into? I'm sorry.
We are definitely at, we'll put that in front of me, but.
Three or five, I can't remember.
We actually are at five.
It was five, yeah, okay.
We went up to five and we are at capacity for similar numbers to our other kindergartens.
2.8 O-class. Yeah, it's just, it's not for proper schools.
Emily, what was that?
Lola Delago class size is currently at 20.8 average for kindergarten for the five sections.
Any other questions on enrollment? Like we're tracking more students different than last year, so we're on target. All right, next is the preliminary levy presentation and again, you're up.
Thank you, Dr. Fran. The levy that we have in front of you that we will need to vote on later on this evening, we have to have this turned into the state or the county auditors by Friday. And what the levy does is essentially tells our county assessor how much we are authorized to spend or to levy our, all of the property owners in our district. When we say that there is a 3.92% increase, that's a 3.92% over what it was the previous year. So it's, it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with how much taxpayers are going to see on their property taxes because again, your property tax is based on the assessed value of your home plus the classes. So when we send this to the auditor, it's their job to distribute all of the $36 million that we are authorized to spend. Every one of these levy are in statute. And I believe I sent to all a, a document that listed all of the, what the levy was for, what the Minnesota statute authorizing the levy was. And then on the, on that document, I also referenced the exact line on the levy certification report that you can find each of these numbers at. There is, when you look at the levy certification report from the Department of Education, it's 40 pages long. And there is some property valuation data on the first page. And then it goes through all of the different iterations of all of the different levy formulas. There's some state aid formulas. It lists everything out. And then the back section, the final section are all the levy adjustments, which because the taxes that our county collects are not always, there's many delinquent, so they will always go back for two years and adjust any of our levies based on the actual amounts that, as they redo the formulas. And one of the things to keep in mind is some of these formulas, for instance, the long-term facilities maintenance, the capital levy, local optional levy, they're based on market values that our county assessor will inform us. We don't know those numbers until we get the levy certification report that first Monday in September. So we don't have any say on what those dollar amounts look like. I can tell you that this year, if we go back for the last four years, the market value in our district, which is, includes all of the townships and cities in, in our district, they typically had gone up about, and these are huge numbers, about $5 billion or. or $500 million every year. This year, they went up 1.5 billion, which is like a 22% increase. And the same.
12 billion?
And then the adjusted net tax capacity in our district, again, if you look at the past four years, was an increase every year of about 7%. And this year, it's up 16%. So the home values in our district have significantly increased in the value that the tax assessor has assessed those property. Another way that we look at kind of the economic growth of the district is sales ratios, and they also tell you in this levy certification report what the tax, what the sales ratios are. And over the last four years, they've been right around 92%. This year, it's 88%. And what that means is that the sale of property is higher than what the assessed value is. I think we've all seen, it's a seller's market, so that sales ratio shows that people are able to sell their homes for more than the assessed value. So as we look at those significant increases, you're going to also see all of those formulas that have those adjusted net tax capacity as part of the formula are also going to increase, which is why you'll see a 22% increase in operating capital, 14% in long-term facilities maintenance. One of the other things that we have authority to levy for other post-employment benefits, we pay a significant amount of money every year for post-employment benefits. We have never in the past levied for that, although we are authorized to do that. This year, and again, I don't know the rationale on why, but this year, we've chosen to levy that, because we do have that authority.
Can I ask a question? So you were here last year during the levy conversation, and we didn't do it during that last year.
Right.
But now we are.
Right, so last.
Can you help me understand the difference between the two years?
So last year, what I said when I first started was, I didn't want to change a lot of things. There was many things that were just kind of the way that we've done it, and I wanted to kind of get a feel for all of those things, why, some of the rationale behind them, and not make just a ton of changes. So I was kind of getting the lay of the land, if you will, that first year. And this year, again, this is money that we're leaving on the table if we don't levy for it. And we're, I don't think, feel like we're in a position that we shouldn't be levying for it when we do have the authority.
And does it come from another kind of money, when you say post-employment benefits?
Well, we pay it out of the general fund.
Okay, so it's basically, okay, I understand. So it should free up money, it's going to add money, but it's going to free up money, basically, from general fund.
So again, tonight, we're just asking you to pre-certify the levy, and we're asking you to pre-certify the max that we're allowed. We don't finalize this until December, we have to do a truth and taxation hearing. Every property owner will get their truth and taxation statement from the county, and then once that whole process happens, you can't hold your truth and taxation hearings until the end of November. So typically, we do that first December board meeting. We open up the truth and taxation hearing for any of our community that want to make any comments, and then we'll ask you to vote on the final levy certification at that point. So tonight, we'll just ask you to pre-certify.
I think it's important to note that if we don't pre-certify the max, then we can't go to the max if we need to. So the general consensus has been to certify the max, because we can always adjust it later in December.
Correct.
You can't go higher, you can't go lower.
Lower.
Director Brand, can you clarify, is that how it's been done in the past? Has it been maxed at this meeting, and then?
City Council does it the same way.
Well, I'm just asking about the school board here, is that how it's been handled in the school board in the past? Okay.
Because we, and it's a standard procedure for almost everyone, just because you can't go lower. So you want to do the pre-certification, I mean, can't go higher. So we can always go lower, and we have gone lower a few years, because the numbers came out differently and things like that. But again, the general consensus is that we do the max, and then we can have the truth, we can get the real numbers back in November, and then make the decision in December.
And to that point, there, if you choose to under-levy, you have to determine which levy you're going to under-levy. And some of them have state aid equalization to them. And if you under-levy, you're also not getting the 100% of the state aid that you're entitled to. So it's kind of a double whammy, if you will.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. To that point, Tammy, if we were to, what did you say, under-levy? What would be an example of one of these things that we could touch or under-levy if we needed to, to your point, without kind of bastardizing, if you will? Sorry for that word, I couldn't think of anything else.
Well, any of them you could, but for instance, if you were to choose achievement and integration levy, that say, we don't want to levy for that full amount, there's an aid and levy portion of it, so you lose the aid portion. And everything that we are allowed to use those dollars for, we're going to have to not spend as much. So that means we'll have to adjust that program down. We'd lose the revenue and not be able to fully utilize the dollars for that program. And then the same with like the Q comp. Again, it's an aid and levy split, if we didn't want to fully levy for it, you're losing money in Q comp, which means you're going to have to eliminate some of the aspects of that program. Referendum, there's also an aid to that, and there's actually equalization in the referendum, so. But you're also affecting something else.
Tammy, I have a question. You talked about choosing to levy for the post-employment benefits this year. Are there other things that we don't, we have not chosen to levy in which we have authority to levy for in this district?
No, well, there is community ed, adult basic ed, which we don't provide. If we did provide an adult basic ed program, we would be allowed to levy for that.
So this, this post-employment benefits would be the one thing that in past years, we haven't, but we did have the authority to, and that is a change that we're making this year.
And then, could I just get clarification on why the numbers changed from this afternoon to 5 o'clock?
So the Department of Education runs, there's information that you have to enter into the levy certification system at MDE. We've done that, and when they ran the first iteration of the report, they got feedback from many districts that there was an error in the calculation for the long-term facilities maintenance. So they reran it, and for, we usually get a levy certification report every night, they rerun it. They reran it, so we changed all the numbers. And then they realized that in the backend formula, it was a negative instead of a positive, so then they reran it, and then we changed the numbers. And then they realized that there was a health and safety that didn't get adjusted, so then they reran it, and we changed our numbers. And so I think from the email that I got at 5 o'clock this evening, they've worked all the bugs out, and this is going to be the final.
So from the general fund, it's 19.9 million. Is, am I correct in understanding that in our budget, we budgeted 18.1 million, is that correct? The budget that was approved?
I think we assumed that it was going to be the same as previous year. But again, there's been legislation that changed, and we don't know what our tax levy is. So if you look at historically, the market value and the adjusted net tax capacity over the last four years has been very consistent. So when you make the assumption that you're going to not see that kind of huge swing, that's what you would assume is going to be in the levy. When we did get our market values, and it went up 22% instead of 7%, then the amount's changed.
And so does this do, does it, I mean, this obviously has an impact on our budget.
For next year.
For next year, correct.
We haven't built the budget yet for next year.
Oh, for next year, okay.
So what we're certifying tonight is the 24, 25.
Okay, for next year, correct. And then I have a question, I looked up, you had quoted in the paper last year that in prior Lake Savagery schools, with the levy that was certified, that the average homeowner at a value of $400,000, the levy that was certified last year, was about $1,347.97 based on a home valued at $400,000. Do you know what the difference is with this levy calculation versus last year? Of how it impacted?
Yeah, we would have to wait till the county ran those truth and taxation, which they're waiting on us to provide this information, and then they'll run their truth and taxation, they'll get the property tax statements, and then once we see those, then we can make some assumptions about what the average taxpayer would see.
I mean, I just look at a five-year average of how our levy increased year after year, every year. And over an average of five years, we were about $461,000 on average, is what we were levying. And this year, we're at 1.4 million over last year. And so I understand the, you know, the idea of max certifying it, and then having the ability to adjust it, which I'm hoping does happen, based on the fact that this year, we're, this is, it'll be tied to inflation, correct? We've talked about that as well, that the levy will be tied to inflation versus not tied to. Oh, it's not?
Our referendum does not.
Oh, okay, my mistake then, I thought I heard you say we're tied to inflation. But with the increase in state funding that we've received, as well as the investment that we've already made, I think it's a lot to ask, to ask this kind of a levy money from our community as well, with the whole money values that have gone up, so just my thoughts. I'm just making sure I have the right number in front of me, I'm sorry, maybe my board book isn't updating. The 5.58%. That's what I should be looking at.
No, there's a new one that just got put in at 5 o'clock.
So it went back.
3.92.
Okay, okay, got it, that's why I was confused, thank you.
And what that 3.92 represents is an increase over what it was the previous year.
Got it, yep, thank you. My version control bad. And that's approximately 1.4 million, correct? Is this the way I calculated it, or?
Any other questions? Moving on to the next report, which again, is going to be Executive Director Herman and Edwards. Oh, I'm sorry, not again, perfect, I'm sorry. Emily and Dr. Edwards, would you like to take over the annual class size and staffing report?
Yeah.
And I am going, by the way, personal here, because we are in a study session, so I'm not trying to be really formal with the director. If that bothers anyone, let me know.
Thank you, everyone. So we wanted to give you an update on our class sizes and staffing report. So our class sizes this year are looking really well, really good, really well, is the English major here. So we're actually in a really good spot in the vast majority of our areas, thanks to our ability to utilize that assigned fund balance to add sections when our rollups came in over the summer quickly, and to make some adjustments on the spot, really helped us out quite a bit. So when looking at all of our schools, all of our schools' average class sizes went down, with the exception of Five Hocks, they overall went up by a .4 student when averaging out all of their grade levels. And then all of our grade levels went down, with the exception of second grade and fourth grade across the district. And again, they only went slightly up by a .014, and then in fourth grade, by a .025. So overall, our class sizes are averages are lower than last year, which is, which is great to see, still within our targets. So we're not below our targets in a lot of areas, but we're at our targets, which feels really good this year, that we're able to accomplish that. In terms of the staffing report, I know we've discussed this before, but just as a reminder, our current software does not allow us to have a true position control system. So we really don't have an accurate count of when our staff are coming in and out of the district, that is a snapshot that we can just pull up right away. But we did work in our department to poll a staffing report last Monday, and then also pull a new one today. So you can see the difference that just happens within one week. And I'm assuming I polled all the data and manipulated it this afternoon, and I'm confident it's already out of date. So, because we are dealing with a lot of people that are coming and going, and all that kind of stuff. But we are in a significantly better spot than we were last year, with only 38.8, sorry, 30.8 FTE openings currently right now. Last year, around this time, we had over 68 FTE openings. We're significantly in a better spot with our special education paraprofessionals than we were last year. We have all of our teaching FTE filled, I know that looks like there's some openings, but we've done some creative things with overloads, and we have other positions hired, we're just waiting on licensures coming through with the, us working with Pelsby on some of those things. But we are in a really good spot with staffing, especially compared to some of our neighboring districts, and also compared to where we were last year. Obviously, we'll continue to do everything in our power, partnering with communications and all the hiring managers for recruiting to get us fully staffed. But I do feel very optimistic of where we're at starting the school year.
Can I answer any questions that anyone has on that? Have you had any questions on the class sizes and open positions?
I'm grateful for the report, thanks a lot, it helps a lot.
We're very hopeful that the upgraded version of Skyward will be able to do this for us, because it's very helpful data to see.
I do have a question on when we are going to get that update to Skyward.
Yep, so we are working through that, upgrading with the technology team, business office, and HR, with hopefully a go-live date next October. We haven't broadly communicated that out to the masses, because we're waiting to get more specific details for that. Right now, it's a lot of the backend stuff, a lot of business office working really, really hard, doing a lot of data cleanup, HR is doing a lot of data cleanup, and tech's already done a significant amount of work to set up systems that need to be in place before we can even do the upgrade to the new version. So we're doing all that work this year, with the intention to go live next October.
Can you work in parallel between the two versions, or do you have to upgrade the one that's in place?
We have to upgrade the one that's in place, and the anticipated blackout time is about a week.
So, and we can't get that done over the summer before the new?
The summer would probably be the absolute worst time for us to do that with HR and the business office, so we have said no to that. So we are looking at around MEA, because there's a lot of our staff that are already out for three days of that week, and hoping that that will minimize the amount of disruption, and with proper communication and advance notice, hopefully, we'll be able to minimize that. But there's really no great time to do it. When we're looking at all the timelines, looking at the three different departments where the workload comes in, we felt that was the best time to do the cutover.
And I had one additional question, if it's okay for everyone. We don't, as you pointed out here, we don't report teacher assistance and parents and stuff like that, particularly the teachers' assistants that are in kindergarten and all that. Is there, is there a reason why, I understand we're only counting the primary classroom teacher, but that does impact ratios that are then reported, I believe, up into Mars and a few other things. And I'm just concerned about the consistency and how we're reporting, is there a reason we don't put that in here?
We are still waiting from MDE to give us more information about what the required class size reporting will look like. According to legislation, it's due October 1st. But they still haven't told us how to submit it, when to submit it, what it's going to look like. So we have those same concerns, but unfortunately, we're just not quite clear on how that's going to be reported quite yet to MDE. For our reporting that we've done here, we've always had an asterisk by those grade levels that, again, doesn't really say too much about the adult-to-student ratio, but I'm hopeful that they'll give us some guidance on how that will be reported. Thank you.
Director, I have one other question. You had sent me an email today, and I apologize, I'm going to fully read it. Did you say there was going to be an update, a more? Did you say there was going to be an update, a more detailed update, further in the year about class sizes per school?
So for the core subject matters? Yeah. Well, we can work on gathering that data. That's another system limitation that we don't necessarily have that down to the T for those grade levels. But we can look into that and get that to the board for the specific core classes in the secondary level and what that FTE to student assignment ratio looks like. So we can work on getting something like that to the October work session.
And there again, similar, awaiting some of that guidance or expectation specifically from MDE on that. We have participated previously in the Metro XU class size and reported data for that. But what we don't know is will the reporting mechanism and expectation from MDE look similar to that? Or will we be reporting new or different information to arrive at that number? So we're awaiting that because it is similar going into Infinite Campus at the secondary level. And there really isn't an efficient way of pulling that information out. It's some manual entry to calculate that number.
To expand on Director Fran's question, that secondary gets even more complicated when you have co-teaching and how do you report that and all the different stuff. So we're hoping that they'll have some guidance for all of that.
Are there any other questions with regards to class size? Okay, moving on, we have a series of proclamations. And we have so many and only have so many board members, so everyone gets one. So Jessica, if you could start with the proclamation for human resources?
Two. Human Resources Appreciation Week, September 25th through the 29th, 2023. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes September 25th through the 29th, 2023 as Human Resources Appreciation Week. Our human resources staff play an essential role in the success of our students by recruiting and retaining a high-quality staff. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for those crucial staff. Whereas National Human Resource Professional Day is celebrated on September 26th, 2023. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 5.5 human resources staff. Whereas human resources staff support our more than 1,300 Prior Lake Savage Area School staff through handling benefits, contracts, employee wellness, professional growth and additional services. Whereas human resources staff work to support the selection and retention of a high-quality workforce so we can fulfill the mission of our district and the success of our students. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' human resources staff for their work supporting all employees and ultimately the educational needs of our students and proclaims September 25th through 29th, 2023 to be Human Resources Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Next proclamation is the National Physical.
It's just like, oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to say something?
I'm so sorry. I just said I'd go right down the line.
It's okay. We like to be efficient in HR too. I would like to just take a minute. Thank you very much for doing all these appreciations because I do feel like staff appreciation and morale is a significant focus for our district and especially in human resources. And I want to give a big shout out to my team. Small and very mighty, very dedicated staff that work tirelessly to help all of our employees with very complex, very sensitive, heavy-hitting topics on a daily basis. And they do it with finesse and grace and a great sense of humor as well. And when thinking about just the staffing component, just the recruitment component, since July 1st, we've hired over 180 staff members. And that's a team of two and a half people doing that. So absolutely fantastic staff. And I've said it last year, I'll say it again, I've never worked with a better team and they are absolutely phenomenal human beings. So also very excited to have a new member. So we said goodbye to Jana, which was very devastating, but excited to have Sagele on the team. She's already proving out within the six days she's been here to be an absolutely amazing addition to the team. So excited to have her aboard. Thank you.
Okay, please forgive my. Because the HR team is incredible. Thank you. Thank you. National Physical Therapist Month, October 2023. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October 2023 as National Physical Therapist Month. This month, we celebrate the physical therapy profession, spotlight the many benefits of physical therapy and how physical therapists help people make changes to improve their quality of life. Physical therapists are integral members of school-based teams that ensure a free and appropriate education for students with disabilities and prepare them for further education, employment and independent living. School-based physical therapists support children who have a disability or functional limitation that prevents them from engaging fully in the education system. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' physical therapists for their work supporting all students and proclaims October 2023 to be National Physical Therapist Month, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you. As we continue to navigate all the challenges of education, there's so many who work behind the scenes that we don't even know about. And I think physical therapists are sometimes like that. We have one in our district. It's Todd Leckler. And he really is a mentor, motivator and advocate for students, helping them achieve their goals, working with teams to ensure that students can access their education and meet their individual goals. So while the work is quiet and often unnoticed this evening, we ensure it doesn't go unappreciated. So thank you for taking the time to notice and to appreciate the work that our physical therapist does. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Operations Services Staff Appreciation Week. Lisa, could you take that one?
Yes, thank you. Operations Service Staff Appreciation Week will be honored October 2nd through the 6th of 2023. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October 2nd through the 6th, 2023 as Operational Service Staff Appreciation Week. Custodial grounds and maintenance staff provide essential support to more than 8,700 Prior Lake Savage Area students, more than 1,300 employees and to the community members who visit and use district facilities. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 72 Operations Services staff. Whereas Operational Services staff are responsible for the care and maintenance of the district's 1.68 million square feet and 13 buildings, one lease space and for over 323 acres of land. Whereas Operational Services staff provide maintenance, repairs, deliveries and custodial services for the district's buildings and grounds. Whereas Operational Services staff take pride in providing students, staff and community members with high-quality, efficient, sustainable and safe physical environments that positively impact our students' learning experience. Whereas Operational Services staff support the district's wise stewardship core value by practicing and implementing energy-saving and sustainability initiatives. Whereas Operational Services staff provide clean, safe and secure facilities and grounds, operate in a resource-efficient and sustainable manner and provide a high level of customer satisfaction. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' Operational Services staff by supporting the education of our students and staff and proclaims October 2nd through the 6th, 2023 as Operational Services Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I would like to thank the school board for the acknowledgement, excuse me, and recognition of District 7119 dedicated custodial and maintenance professionals. The work of these Operational Services staff touches every student, staff and visitor in the district and their skill and dedication are unparalleled. This team cares for our district's assets year-round, staffing sites up to 17 hours a day and on many weekends, providing clean, comfortable and safe physical environments that positively impact our students' learning experience. Excuse me. There are the faces behind the sidewalk that are shoveled, the clean offices and classrooms, the ball field that is mowed, the event that's set up, the lighting, heating, cooling and the plumbing that works when we need it to work and will fix it when it doesn't. This team is also deeply involved in our site safety, security and response measures, actively working to ensure compliance with safety and security best practices and regularly training to respond to potential what-if scenarios that could occur before, during or after school hours. The work of the Operational Service staff is essential to the district and I am very proud of our team and the work that they do. I am thankful for your proclamation and know that the staff has seen and valued. Thank you.
And next we have. Really National Coaches Day.
National Coaches Day, October 6th, 2023. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October 6th, 2023 as National Coaches Day. We honor the men and women who inspire us to work harder and do our best. Across the country, in every community, a coach organizes teams, plans practices and training, motivates players to strive to be the best they can be. At the same time, coaches pinpoint areas for improvement and supply guidance. Every sport or competition requires a leader. More importantly, a leader who knows the game and how to drive athletes to work together as a team. Many coaches maintain a schedule for training, conditioning and preparing athletes. Not only do they create these schedules for competition, but also for their best health. Injuries sideline athletes and upset team dynamics. Although a coach's final goal is winning, they do so through a wealth of knowledge. Coaches work to build teams that bond well too. They develop work ethics and set standards for their athletes that many carry with them throughout their lifetime. For many athletes, coaches teach them to focus on how to reach a goal, which sometimes is not about winning. Sometimes the achievement is the improvement, playing by the rules and learning to respect, learning respect for others, themselves or the game. Coaches represent leadership, mentors and inspiration. Often, a coach's words also echo through an athlete's mind for years to come. During difficult times, the words motivate them forward. Rarely do these coaches even know the impact they've had on an athlete until many decades pass. Let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' coaches for their work supporting all students and proclaims October 6th, 2023 to be National Coaches Day in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you. I know Beth Fuller's in the back and I'm going to read a few words, but certainly if you want to share anything, you're more than welcome to. This is on behalf of Jeff Marshall, our Activities Director, and wants to take the time to recognize all of our coaches, advisors and staff. And he apologizes about not being in here because he's got this little thing called Homecoming Week going on right now and likely at events occurring tonight. So he is with us in spirit. Jeff says that he works with an outstanding group of people. The amount of time, dedication, commitment, passion and energy that our coaches and advisors put into their co-curricular activities is truly amazing. It has been shown that a coach and advisor has as much, if not even more, of an impact on the growth and development of students than even their parents. In education-based athletics and activities, our coaches and advisors are constantly asked to look at their purpose, their why for what they do. Winning is always one of our goals, but it's not why we coach and lead these activities. Rather, the work is about cultivating and developing outstanding human beings through an understanding of teamwork, accountability, knowing it's okay to fail and displaying compassion, respect and love for those around you. I can read that sentence twice. It's about building relationships that are authentic, honest and lasting. Our coaches and advisors do not do this for the pay. If you ever figured out their hourly rate, it isn't much. But rather, they do it for the passion they have for the sport and activity and the love they have for those students on whom they make such a large impact and difference. We are extremely lucky and honored to be able to have such outstanding individuals leading our students in these various roles. And I want to say thank you to all of them for the difference they make in so many lives. Additionally, we could not run all of our events and competitions without the outstanding support and commitment we receive from our event workers. Many individuals from throughout the district have given up countless nights and weekends to help support and manage our events. They are often the unsung heroes in making sure all of our events run smoothly. And I want to thank them all for their continued support and dedication. This includes Martha Walls, who works tirelessly at almost every event we host, as well as the amazing grounds crew that Jim just mentioned and custodial staff for the work and support they provide for our events. Lastly, I need to recognize and thank the amazing individuals who work in the Activities Office. Beth Fuller, who's here tonight, Heather Pearson, Lauren Albrecht and Nancy Tice, who recently retired, as you may recall, after over 10 years of service in the Activities Office. And this team is truly unbelievable in what they do. Their ability to multitask, create relationships with students and staff members, keep the office organized and running efficiently and keep me in line, I was waiting for that, and keep me in line while continuing to teach me new things every day is remarkable. I could not ask for a better staff and they are one of the main reasons why I get up each morning and look forward to coming to work. All four of them are more than just coworkers. We wake up, we make up our own team based on our friendship and bond that we have with each other as true colleagues and friends. Thank you to the Activities Office staff for your amazing work, commitment, dedication and love that you show the entire PLSAS community. And this is written on behalf of our Activities Director, Jeff Marshall.
Can I say one thing? Is that okay? Do you have anything personal to add or just the statement?
No, I think you did a wonderful job. He deserves a hand, you know, a pat on the back as well.
And so did you.
Good leader and we've done a lot of professional development with our coaching staff and with others. And so it's going to pay off and it is paying off and making connections in the building, such a large building.
Yeah, I'll read the last proclamation, which is Arts, Athletics and Activities Staff Appreciation Week. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October 2nd through the 6th, 2023 as Arts, Athletics and Activities Staff Appreciation Week. Arts, Athletics and Activities staff provide extracurricular support to our more than 8,700 Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' students. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas Arts, Athletics and Activities staff support learning and development to students outside the traditional classroom. Whereas Arts, Athletics and Activities staff instill lifelong positive traits in students such as confidence, teamwork, communications and more that can all be translated to various aspects of students' lives. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' Arts, Athletics and Activities staff for supporting the extracurricular activities and the education of our students and declares October 2nd through the 6th, 2023 to be Arts, Athletics and Activities Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
And Beth, do you, is there any, do you want to say anything?
No, wonderful job. I'm just here supporting everyone and.
I appreciate everything that you're saying and that everybody said.
I'll just echo for our staff that are watching or our community that, you know, the Arts, Athletics and Activities is a critical component to overall student success. When we talk about educating the whole student, that's a large component. So obviously, our bread and butter is core academics with our kids. But, you know, to engage them in other aspects, you know, many of our students, if it weren't for one of these avenues, may not ever show up at school. You know, it might be that art teacher or that coach or, you know, the play or the band, something that really draws them in. And we need to be mindful that, again, the staff that work in these areas play a critical role on par with what happens academically with our students. So thank you to all of our staff in Arts Academics or Arts, Athletics and Activities. You do an amazing job and love that you are supporting our students every single day.
Thank you very much.
Can I say one thing, Mary?
Yes, please.
With these last two proclamations, I just kind of want to give a shout out to the volunteer coaches and advisors and things like that, that especially, you know, from the younger levels, you know, that are, you know, trying baseball for the first time or trying cheer or, you know, basketball or whatever the. or trying cheer, or, you know, basketball, or whatever the club may be, that those are usually run by volunteers too. So in my mind and heart, these two proclamations are for them as well. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that too.
That's great. Okay, moving on, we have Superintendent Relations. So Beth Thomas.
There was no governance policy.
No, there's no policies.
Okay. So just two, two quick things tonight. I wanted to give our board and our community an update on a topic that's occupying way too much of my time, and that's the conversation around SROs in our schools. As I've communicated to the board, and this is mainly, I think, for our broader community that might not be tracking all the media streams, but our Attorney General Keith Ellison has issued a supplemental opinion that I, I think squarely framed the concern at hand from my vantage point. It is not going to suffice for our local law enforcement agencies to reinstate the original contract that we had with them, to return the SRO model back to our schools through their advisement. And I learned that just recently here with our chiefs. And I, I will just share with the board and our community, as I've stated on many different occasions around this matter, when, when our community hears that SROs are no longer in our schools, I think it's unfortunately become synonymous that police are no longer in our schools. And I want to be clear with the board and clear with our community that might be watching this back or dialing in this evening. We still have and remain partnered with our local law enforcement agencies. We still do have police presence in our campuses. We still do have police presence at our activities. We still do have police response when called upon and needed for additional support for safety on our campuses. So what we don't have is an SRO structure, meaning in some cases, a singular appointed officer that's stationed more frequently in one of our campuses. That does not exist as it used to in the past. This does not prevent, nor has it prevented, law enforcement to be in our schools on a varying basis, whether they are just coming through for a tour, checking in with administration, walking through halls, whether it has been to, like I said, respond to a campus call when we had, you know, a student dysregulation issue that we needed to address. They were there promptly, addressed the matter, you know, actually didn't even address it, like they were physically present, our staff addressed the matter, no different than what has happened in the past. So I want to just make sure that folks are not making it synonymous that with SROs not present, that, that, that does not mean that police are not present. It does look different. The relationship is still intact, but it does look different. And I want, I'm not trying to, you know, pull the wool over anybody's eyes on that. But I want to remind our community, remind the board, that even with an SRO model, our SRO wasn't always on that campus, based upon various things that they needed to do in their broader role as a law enforcement officer. So know that our chiefs have a full commitment to supporting our relationship with our district. We have a full commitment to maintaining a partnership and relationship with our local law enforcement agencies. You are also seeing more districts, I'm sorry, you are seeing more law enforcement agencies pull back from traditional SRO models. Just in the past week, I think we've got about five more that have pulled back. This is not something that I don't think any of us really forecasted this would become the scenario it's become. I'll just leave it at that. Because the language that has been put into legislation has been language that all of us in education have been adhering to for the past 10 years. And when this did kind of peak a conversation with law enforcement, Police Chiefs Union, leadership, et cetera, that's where I think we began to get various interpretations of what the language actually meant. And so it looks different, sounds different from one municipality to the next, something that we don't control, but definitely will keep you abreast if anything changes. But at this point, I anticipate we are gonna be in this pattern until February, when the regular session starts. Just to remind our community, if they haven't read, I think in the latest Prior Lake American or whatever the savage paper, we did send a joint letter to the governor and a variety of key elected officials on behalf of the district and our law enforcement and mayors of each respective city, expressing our concern with how this has kind of mushroomed into what it is. And we did call for a change in some language. And again, with the reality of a special session being called kind of dwindling every single day, I would anticipate that that letter, because it got a response literally the very next day from multiple elected officials, I would anticipate at the bare minimum, we would at least be asked to be a part of the conversation of the regular session, so that we can have a more informed discussion and provide our input and our local experiences with the hopes to influence what would come out of that legislative session. So I wanted to give the board an update on that. And then the last thing is a much lighter-hearted message, and that is just a reiteration. This is Homecoming Week, and I think with a singular high school, we can all get behind the spirit of homecoming and really kind of culminate to that big Friday night lights game this Friday. Today was Get Up and Go. Many of us are wearing our casuals. Several of you have swapped out shoes for slippers and sweats and all that, and so I really want to thank the board. And again, students know, as adults, we still have a little kid in us too, and we love to have any excuse to take off ties and business jackets and get into our comfy cozies. Just remainder of the week, should any of our board members or even if you're an adult or a community member coming into our school, you want to embrace the spirit. Tomorrow is University Pride Day, so whatever kind of university apparel you would like to wear, wear it with pride, bring it into our schools, and let kids know what's important to you in terms of universities. Wednesday will be Barbie and Ken Day. You all know the craze that has taken over this country around that movie. So whatever that means to you, do that. I've seen plenty in my own family of, I did not go to that movie. They begged and pleaded, but I did not go. And then Thursday, and I would love to see, I'm gonna have to make an appointment to go to the high school for this, Adam Sandler Day. So a couple of us have hypothesized what that might mean. I've seen some Adam Sandler movies. I'll refrain from maybe some of that, but.
So it's dresses and characters.
I think it's dress as your parent, you know, kind of mock the older adult culture, perhaps? I don't know, but.
He's done many different roles. So I took it as the interpretation of, he's played a lot of different roles, so pick your favorite.
Open season.
This is a popular thing, actually.
It is a very popular thing, so I'm gonna just, we'll see what the posts look like come Thursday, all right? We'll see what those posts, and then lastly is, this Friday is Laker spirit. So anything Laker gear, wear it with pride, and let's take it to the field and smash it and show them how it's done in our home court, all right? So that's all I had to report.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So thank you for the update on the SRO. I know it's a lot, I feel like we've been handed the lemons as much as the other half has been handed the lemons. I think one thing that, that I heard that was interesting and I thought could possibly, I don't know, help our situation is, you know, the comfort of knowing that the SRO in the high school, she knew that building, she knew those kids, she knew all the hotspots. Our, I'm assuming we're working with our, our police department, because they're gonna have a different officer coming in depending upon what, when they're responding to what incident. How are we familiarizing those officers with our building that is a unique model with all the different pods? And so that they can respond as quick and knowing where to go and what to do.
So, great, great question, and I will say this, thankfully, Prior Lake and Savage Police Departments aren't massive, and so there's not a lot of officers during that day shift of that timeframe of our schools that typically rotate in and out, they kind of have that shift. We are getting to know them. So case in point, we had a situation at the high school where we had officers report to the main entry, and we had officers who knew to report to the pod. And that was a conversation that we had with the officers, the lead officer as well, just to familiarize them to say, okay, if we get a call, here's our layout of our school with the various pods. If it is something that we want towards the front, we're gonna call you to the main office, but otherwise, there's access points and staff that would be available to allow you to gain entrance to that immediate vicinity. And I think those are some of those nuanced conversations we'll have to have. I will say that we have been told that should anything warrant ongoing police work, we will have the consistent officer for the investigation side of everything that has a relationship, that knows our systems, our practices, et cetera. So that's actually still a constant that they've committed to ensuring will happen. So that's how we would handle that, and that's how we just recently did last, or last week or whenever it was.
And then what does the partnership look like at a big event like Homecoming Dance this weekend? You know, I don't even know what it looked like in the past, to be honest with you, if they were onsite.
I don't know if you want to speak to dances, but I can tell you from dances.
I mean, I understand games, but.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to dances. I, I don't know, because I've not been to a Homecoming Dance here.
That's a great question. I do know that in the past, they have had a presence of the SRO that has participated or been at the event. But that is something that certainly we can follow up. I will follow up with our administrative team at the high school to understand what that arrangement is in terms of, I think one of the other pieces that the, Savage, because it's in Savage, they will, because that will be a place of interest at that time of Saturday evening specifically, so available, I'm confident that there will be available patrol. Because they have been onsite, in addition to the SRO, historically, they have been onsite around particularly the arrival and the exit times of those events, had a presence that has been previously engaged, so I assume that we will, we will verify that.
And if there's a need for additional volunteers, checking backpacks, whatever, to take on that role, I know that the community always responds very well if there's a call for volunteers.
I have a question on that, because I see line items in the financial report over the last several years where we actually contracted.
Correct.
The officer, it wasn't the, under the SRO contract, that was extra money that came out, just like for games, dances, et cetera.
That is correct. We have done that. We have added resources to that, but again, the agency, the being an agent.
Yeah, so, so this, so that's no longer going to happen? That support is actually wrapped into their committed relationship with us for the, the financial contract that they have now assumed fiscal responsibility for. All of that support is included. So presence at activities, presence at games, there's no additional contract or charge to us for this. This is part of their high patrol beat, and that's part of the agreement that we had is that our schools, on a regular basis, in addition to activities or games, et cetera, will be designated, similar to Music Fest, as a high patrol event. And so obviously not at that scale, but that's the level of presence. So every game that we've had, I can, I can say has been, you know, always attended with law enforcement there, present.
So for instance, the game that happened the other weekend where we had the law enforcement there, the, the two officers, that was not part of the, they were not paid separate, that was part of.
That's all part of their relationship.
That's actually quite impressive. I knew, I knew it went farther, but I didn't realize it went that far. That's fantastic.
The other piece I would add, and maybe lean on Jim DeWol, he referenced this in the acknowledgement of the operations team and the relationship that the operations team, including Haley Heidelberg, our new person overseeing crisis management, working with our law enforcement to the idea of there are additional officers now engaged in this. The day shift, for example, across our two cities, and we have been working over time to get them familiar with our facilities. And that has been something that prior to Haley's arrival and since Haley's arrival, we've been engaged in. Anything you want to add to that, Jim?
Yeah, so all the squads have prints of our buildings, they have been electronically, they can pull them up, have access to our camera systems. That has been an ongoing commitment between the school and the PDs.
And I'll just close by saying that in October, we will be requesting an executive session with the board to do a deeper dive around safety and security measures, both our physical security updates as well as our digital security updates. Obviously, that's something we want to broadcast to the entire community, but per MSBA guidelines and law, we can close for security measures so that you all can get a briefing and understand kind of what happens behind the scenes to give you all a sense of assurance of various things, as well as some enhancements that we anticipate will be coming in response to what we see, for example, with our colleagues across the river in St. Paul, recently getting hit again, which seems to be the trend. So more to come in October through an executive, or a closed session, sorry.
Thank you.
With the board.
Okay, moving on, reminders, there is the Board Scholar Program at Prior Lake High School on October 2 at 11:00 a.m., and we will be honoring 507 board scholars. That's.
That's a lot.
That's quite amazing. It is, it's a lot. You know, when we used to do it at night in the auditorium, there was barely enough room on the stage for them, and it was quite a phenomenal presentation, and the lunchroom is just as good, if not better, because they get to do it in front of everybody. So yes, so October 2 at 11:00 a.m. And then next on the item is future agenda topics. So does anyone have anything they would like to bring up on a future study session?
I was just wondering, in terms of strategic planning and things like that, I know we discussed that at our last study session, that we were going to bring it. I didn't know if that was, not October, obviously, but didn't know if we were going to, I guess, when we were gonna start those conversations.
So actually, October is our target month of when we would talk with you about what we potentially could do with an existing relationship, particularly around keeping it cost neutral at this point, to not introduce a potential third party into the, into the mix. We were going to do this in tandem tonight, but we thought we would keep that separate from the initial STUDER report to keep it clean with STUDER, just so that we can have a different kind of a conversation coming up. So that will be coming for you in October, or for the board.
Okay. I didn't realize it was gonna be in October. Okay.
Well, and if I may question you, so just if we thinking, you know, if, if this is something that the board is committed to pursuing, timing-wise, we have kind of a narrow window of opportunities to start putting together a lot of community cafe sessions, engagement with community, getting perspective, weighing in, you know, so that come the end of the school year, I would say May-ish, the board could be taking a vote on a new multi-year plan that would effectively begin July. So we want to give ourselves some lead time in developing what that would entail, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for other study sessions?
I just wanted to follow up. I think it was May that I had asked for an agenda item. I don't remember what the thumbs up, thumbs down result was. I think that it was. Um, I think that it was regarding signage and things of that nature in the school buildings. Um, and I think that, uh, when we talked about it at that study session, that it would be, um, possibly waiting until the, um, certain policy came up for review, um, maybe 904, I think it is. And so, I just asked, wondering what an update is on, on that.
Well, 904 is definitely in our policy agenda for the policy committee, um, and I, I don't know when, no, I thought it was like next, after December.
Uh, we're in the 400s, 500s, and 600s, so we wouldn't be going over the 900s this year.
Right, so after December is what I thought, right? After, end of the year, January, next?
Next school year.
Next school, yeah, oh, next school year. Twenty twenty-four in the fall, or twenty twenty-four?
Because this school year, we're going through, so this school year, we're going through the 400s, 500s, 600s?
Okay.
So, it'd be next school years, or, next school year would go into 700s, 800s.
Okay.
And so, just clarity, like, uh, on that original ask, and I think it was in May, um, I, I felt like we had, um, accepted that, um, to be talked about, and so, yeah, just kind of following up on that.
So, so, so may I just say that I actually believe, um, so aside, so there, there may be connections to policy, um, and I think that was the, some of the conversation, I also believe it's something to engage with community, um, through this process of our cafes, that will naturally come forward as conversations of what's a priority and how do we want to, um, market or illustrate our, our district to the community. Similar to other topics that have come before the board, um, I think the parental, um, rights, um, conversation was another one, that I think bringing these types of conversations through an organic kind of community cafe process helps us understand, for lack of a better term, the will and kind of temp of our community around what is of value, what how do they want to characterize, visualize, communicate, you know, what's important, uh, what's of value. I think a lot of that can be rolled into the conversation of a new strategic plan, because with that comes, um, oftentimes, and correct me if I'm wrong, Christy, um, new kind of branding, marketing, signage, et cetera. So, it, I, I think there's a natural fit there in parallel to what policy may impact that conversation, which may not take it out of the queue, but definitely be informing the conversation that we have with our community on that topic. So, I anticipate that this is something that would naturally be a part of our community engagement process.
I would actually agree with that, because I think our policy is limited to what the board can control, a lot of it's student, you know...
Yeah, schools do a lot.
Language, freedom of speech, and then there's the local building, uh, management itself, the principals, et cetera, that determine a lot, and our policy actually is, it's pretty limited, actually, to what we actually control in that space, but, um, I think, I personally believe that would be the best place to put it, and also expedite the process.
So, I, I will say, um, thi- this is, this is a conversation that I'm, um, interested in, in having, I, I think I've talked to a couple of you maybe in our one-on-ones about this. Um, it is a conversation I planted a seed for with all of our student leadership group leads, I guess the chair, chairs or presidents or whatever of the various student clubs at the high school. Um, I also think there's a strong correlation between, um, the visual statements of our district compared to the profile of a graduate work that we're engaging in with World Savvy, of how do we capture, um, the proactive, positive messaging, um, and, and I'm not putting valuation on what's up currently, I'm just saying, that's the direction that I began to have conversation with, you know, I think it was just a week, a week or so ago when I met with all the student leads, and that is a formal process that I'll be having with our students for scheduled times this year as a student superintendent cabinet, so that they can help me understand, and I'm specifically talking at the high school, which a lot of this has generated from there, give me your understanding, students, of how we got to where we're at today, and where do we want to go in the future, how, what does this look like, you know, five years from now, or two years from now, you know? So, those are some of the things that I've already been planting, um, over the past week with our student leads, um, at the high school. So, again, I just think there's a natural synergy with this community cafe engagement.
The only, um, thing that I, I think we've been told over and over that falls under 904, which I'm, I'm trying to understand this myself, is the, um, the concern about some teacher apparel, and so, my understanding as a district employee, just like a dis, a, a teacher would not drive a, um, a district van and put a bumper sticker on that van of their choice, of their political belief, whatever, that it, it's the same concept, is that there's different rules if you are a student versus a district employee, and I believe that that falls under, currently is what I've heard, is that falls under 904 as well. And so, I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that that's also part of the whole 904 conversation.
Yeah, that's the bigger policy conversation, the formal policy conversation, yes, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah, so not, and so that, I think, is what we were, uh, what Director Bullion was, correct, am I wrong about that, or?
No, it just encompassed it all, right?
Because it does fall under board policy, it is policy work, and so, wondering when we can bring that policy forward, just like we brought 2034 then, to have a conversation, because we, we, we hear, um, concerns in the district about that, and the impact to the student's ability to either be, um, how do you say, feel positive about those messages or negative about those messages in their learning environment.
So, can I add something? And this is generically based down about 904, but the question I have in my mind is, is as we decided to move from, years ago, you had a policy committee, and then the district got out of having a new policy committee, correct? Um, does the board have the ability to accelerate a pos, policy to be brought to policy committee if it's not in the natural progression of, we're at the 400s, 500s, 600s this year, if that makes sense? Because I would feel like a generic conversation, if something was in a board policy that drastically changed and the board wanted it to be discussed, because we've implemented this policy committee, do we have the ability as the board to request that that goes to policy committee sooner? Or does it just have to live through its life cycle?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want us to be a little bit cautious about the fact that this is future topic agenda items, and I, I don't want to see too far into discussion or decision-making, because then we could be going against what's been publicly stated on the agenda, so I think if we want to dive deeper into that, we should consider moving this discussion after it's been posted on agenda so the public knows that we're talking about it in advance. So, I just want to be a little cautious, I know it's a gray area, but we may be dipping a little bit further into discussion and decision-making than just talking about what we want to future talk about.
Thank you, that's kind of where I was going when that kind of came up, and then the expansion of it. Um, um, what I'd like to do is revisit this, um, but in the meantime, if it's okay with you, leave it as part of the community discussion, um, because I, I, I do think that the natural progression of that is going to feed anyways into it, so, um, is that okay with you, Dr. Thomas?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, and then the other thing is, is I just want to point out that the 200s are board only, the rest of them, I believe all the rest of them, save maybe one, I think was an exception, actually goes through policy committee now, is that, I think there was one, I can't remember what it was, but there was one that was outside the 200s, it's some little nuance with it, I thought that...
Something in the hundreds, I can't remember, and my computer died, I apologize.
Well, I would say Director Burnett has a fair question, I think, and can we go to MSBA and ask that question? I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a valid question.
But I don't think this has anything to do with MSBA.
Well, it's, it's a procedural question, correct?
I think that we have the opportunity as a district to review our policies as often as we want, we just have to meet our board policy on how often we review our, our board policies, that's not something that's dictated by MSBA.
As the, as the minimum, yeah, whatever we have set, so.
Or, and, and some districts don't even have that as a policy, so it's really, it's really district, local, local, district, district decision on that.
So, getting clarification of, can a policy be brought up for discussion outside of the agenda, I think is the question that was raised.
No, my question was, with a board, with a policy committee in place, does the board have the ability to push a policy through ahead of the schedule? I mean, I'm not on the policy committee, so let's just make sure we know that, that I don't know exactly the schedule, but if there was something that became of importance to board, this is not, like, digging deep, we can talk about it at another meeting, but can we push something ahead that's not in the series that's scheduled, like, could we have the ability to do such things? I would think we could, but I... I think we have the ability, I think where, if I may speak, um, where Director Herman was going was that, that we were talking so much about this topic, and it's not on the agenda, that technically, that is, uh, I'm not sure where it's a violation, but I know we've been trained on it at MSBA, that you, you can't bring up certain topic, we can talk about with thumbs up or thumbs down, uh, because it's on our agenda, but we're not supposed to dive into topics that needs to be done and announced to the public in advance, and with, so when we start talking about a specific policy, we haven't notified the public that that's what we're going to do. We can talk about the plan to talk about it.
True.
But not dive deep into it, and that's where we kind of started going into changing the policy committee, doing this, changing, you know, talk, well, no, changing the, the order of precedence and stuff like that, so.
My specific...
If we want to be specific with the...
My specific ask was only just kind of clarification, just because it was brought to my attention again by a community member today, um, and so, him reminding me that I had brought it up, right? And so, that's, we're at this, this space in, in the agenda, and so, just, just seeking clarity on having the, the thought, and I, and I totally agree with you, like...
To the original question of future topic, I think it will be coming forward to the board as we open up the kind of strategic planning, community engagement aspect of that strategic planning process, that's where I think that update would come into play, because I think any changes to that plan will likely have a marketing branding, you know, component to it, so more to come with that, but that's where I would see it happening, separate from the policy discussion, to your question.
And that makes, that makes complete sense to me, um, I think another comment that I would make on that is, um, understanding, uh, what the expectation is, if we ask for a future agenda item to come, to come up, and if the board agrees upon it, what is the expectation, you know, it, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I agree with that process, it's just trying to understand what the expectation of it as when, so it doesn't feel like it's just out there, and that's helpful to me, it's helpful to me when I'm communicating back to concerns brought to my attention, um...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, oh, fairness, and Martha, I'll ask you to validate this, but I don't think that got the thumbs up, because we said we were going to either wait for policy or a larger discussion, um, and I think that it's, I think that maybe the, the, the concern here, and I'm just, I'm speculating, I don't know, um, that, um, you, you didn't feel that the issue was resolved in that manner before, so you're bringing it, because you didn't remember what the vote was, yes or no?
I didn't.
So, um...
And I, I, I don't.
And I don't think there's a problem with bringing the same thing up again and asking for it to be replaced on the agenda either, um, only thing that I'm going to ask the board to do is, do we want to, and I, and I'm assuming we do, is bring that up as, as part of the general community discussion, as well as the ongoing discussions with the student groups, and then, and then, of course, we have the policy. Is that a fair assessment, just...
That's, that's...
In the organic way, I'm talking about...
I mean, um, if you're asking me, yes, I think that's a natural progression, and if I had to give you a window, I would say your November through January is where the bulk of that engagement would occur, so that we can have this broader discussions, um, with the board, then that potentially would incorporate these changes, you know, I'll, I'll just stop there, because I'm about ready to go down another topic.
Yeah.
So, yes, I think that's, that's fair, and I think that's about the target window as I would project, if this is the, um, direction that we will go as a board, as a district.
Again, I, I hope that I was, I hope I didn't make it, um, more challenging, that I think just giving, giving a window when the discussion will be, um, brought up, and I do, I also agree wholeheartedly that giving community input, a broader community input is vital to these kind of things, so, um, just wanting to see that progress.
Got it.
Is there anything, go ahead?
Yeah, and so, um, if you're...
I'm done.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That was a lot longer than I...
Yeah, no, that's okay. Um, I just wanted to, continuing on with, um, what Director Bullion said about, when we bring something up, I want to just follow up on it, um, we had talked about the October study session, having, taking a deeper dive on the MCA and the FASFIRE scores, is that still on the table to look at the academics?
The 30th or whatever it is?
Okay, all right.
Oh, no, whatever.
Yeah, 30th.
Yeah, we moved it to the 30th. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Okay, um, with that, good point, I do want to remind people that our October study session was moved to the 30th, um, in lieu of our normal, um, 23rd, I think is what it was, um, so, uh, just a reminder for that, and with that, I'm going to adjourn the study session, and we're going to move into a regular meeting, and for the purpose of convenience, we can stay here, um, and then we will stand up and just face the flag when we do the formal. So, um, does anyone need a break? Okay, we'll take a, what, a five-minute break?
Do I take a break between the, after the, the open session before negotiations?
Oh, the close session.
Because you have a...
It's fine, we only have one thing to vote on, so if you want to wait, we'll do the, okay, let's do that then, so, um, we'll go ahead. Are you okay with that, Jess?
I'm going to call the meeting to order at 8:47.
We adjourned, we adjourned.
We adjourned the study session.
We already adjourned, and then she's opening it.
Now, I'm opening it right now, so, um, uh, 8:47 p.m., and let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all board members are present, except for Chair Crosby and Director Velasquez, and I need to, um, appoint a clerk, so I will appoint Julie.
She's already the treasurer.
Oh, the treasurer, we can't do that, Jess, Jessica will appoint you the clerk.
Let's do that.
Okay, and then, um, I'm going to call, I would need a motion to approve the agenda. Tell me, second from anybody?
Second.
Okay. So, that motion passes, and the business item we have to vote on is to cert, do the preliminary certification for the 2324 tax levy. Director Fredrickson, do you have anything to add?
We are asking you to please certify the max levy tonight, and then we will have until the December board meeting to finalize it.
Okay, so I'm going to call for a motion, uh, to certify the preliminary levy. Tell me, second, anybody?
Second.
So, that, anybody have any questions?
Um, I would just like to get, um, I know we talked about this earlier, but reconfirmation on the numbers, since there was some confusion from what was posted before versus what was posted at 5 o'clock, um, so that I'm clear on what we're, we're looking at here. Um, can you clarify what the dollar amount is and the percentage?
The total amount that we're asking for the max levy is 35,991,496, which represents a 3.92% increase over the current year levy.
Any other questions?
Um, just as a first-year board member, can you tell me what a no vote would mean to our, to the levy, to the, to the community? Just what would, if, if that, can you just explain what that would mean?
If there was a no vote, then the, um, tax assessor's office would have to, um, use the current year.
Okay.
Because they have to, I mean, it's a... Because they have to, I mean, it's a state statute that they have to get the truth and taxation hearings out.
So and the difference of that to what this is, is significant.
Is 1.4 million, correct?
This current year is 34.6 million.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Or nay, sorry, nay.
Okay, so that passes for one. And I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Please, and a second?
Second.
Second, so made by Director Olstad and seconded by Director Bullion. We are adjourned. Okay, so let's take like a five minute recess for people to take a break. We'll come back and we'll go on a closed session.